No.
Six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. This is a special public hearing meeting. The agenda, we should approve it. Thank you, second?
Second.
Next. All in favor? Aye, closed? Very none, the agenda is approved. Christina, I will turn it to you.
Thank you. So, we have two um ordinances tonight to uh read and take Q and A on. I'm gonna start with the cannabis business regulation. There have been no changes since we discussed this at the work session next. I can note that on Monday of last, Tuesday of last week, the county approved their version. So um. Before I get into all the details, um how much? Do you guys want me to read, since we don't have any public here? I'll skim through, I can skim through the highlights if that's okay to save some time. That sounds, otherwise I'll, I'll read the whole thing.
Well, I don't think we need to read the whole thing, I guess it would just be highlights.
Okay, I'll go through, I'll go through the biggest things.
Thirteen pages. If, if it's, if it's all members of the public as you stated.
I realize the weather kind of turned and the roads might be a little bit slippery, but might keep people away, but it's still available for anyone to view in its entirety.
And, and I don't want to slow down anything else, but we have some guests for the regular meeting that I proceeded told them that this was happening ahead of time. Come a little later, so.
There you go.
Um, I'll just highlight, um, the first few pages um discuss the reason for the ordinance, um authority, the jurisdiction, how it's enforced, goes through definitions and how it's being regulated. Uh, the city of Black Duck has agreed to delegate the registration to Beltrane County. At which point, we're pretty much under their umbrella for their oversight as well as their compliance checks if anything were to happen in the city. And I did also, so I don't go to another meeting last Monday that, you know, met with other municipal entities and got a bunch of other questions answered too down there, that was great. Um, there's no fees from the city because the county is regulating that. On the applications submitted goes right to um the Beltrane County Auditor's Office. Um, they are the ones that approves, or the state approves the license and then uh goes towards the county for registration. County, like I said earlier, will do all the compliance checks. Any renewals of the registration. Any suspension notifications? And notifying the office of cannabis management if there is any suspensions and penalties. That brings me to page seven. And the requirements of cannabis business in buffer areas for our city, which is section one one seven zero dot three subdivision one. I will read this in its entirety then, um because there's language in here that the county adopted that governs us.
Specifically for us.
For any, for any, any other local government. Yep. The following minimum buffer requirements shall be met for all business types for business applications in the city of Black Duck that delegates authority to Beltrane County. The minimum buffer requirements may be reduced with a vote of support at a city council meeting of the city of Black Duck citing the specific business application and acceptable, acceptable buffer distance. Which basically means that applicant would have to require, would have to get a variance approved by this board. Okay? Uh, the city of Black Duck shall prohibit the operation of cannabis businesses within two hundred feet of a school as measured by the shortest line between the property line of the space, of the space to be occupied with a proposed cannabis business to the nearest property line of the school. That is the biggest one that's different from the county, the county is a thousand feet. The city of Black Duck shall prohibit the operation of a cannabis business within five hundred feet of a daycare as measured by the shortest line between the property line of the space to be occupied and the daycare. The city of Black Duck shall prohibit the operation of a cannabis business within five hundred feet of a residential treatment facility measured the same way. Um, the city of Black Duck shall prohibit the operation of a cannabis business within five hundred feet of an attraction within a public park that is regularly used by minors, including a playground or athletic field as measured by the shortest distance line, shortest line between the property line of the space to be occupied by the business to the nearest property line of the park. And the city of Black Duck shall prohibit the operation of a cannabis, the retail business within five hundred feet of another cannabis retail business. Pursuant to the statute, um nothing in that section shall prohibit inactive cannabis business or a cannabis business seeking registration from continuing operation of the same site if a school, daycare, residential treatment facility, or an attraction with a public park that is regularly used by minors moves within the minimum buffer zone. Then, we go on for our own zoning and land use. Um, we have delegated in section uh eleven seventy dot three subdivision two one where cultivation may be permitted, which is our industrial zone. Should I just push the zoning app way back there so nobody can see it? And the agricultural zones of the city. Cannabis manufacturing um may only be permitted in the industrial zone. Hemp manufacturer may only be permitted in industrial, B two, which is highway business zone, B three, general business zone. Wholesale may only be permitted in industrial uh highway business, B two, and general business, B three. Cannabis retail is permitted in B one, which is central business, which is downtown. B two, which is the highway business, and B three, which is general business. Any questions on that? Hours operation follow the county ten AM to ten PM. Advertising restrictions follow the city's sign ordinance. The temporary cannabis events are all going to be governed by the county. Um, it's important to note that they can't be, um, they can't take place on any public property. That is also noted in the county's ordinance. And noted in subdivision one four of that section. Section five talks about lower pot, potential potency hemp edibles um and the sale of it, the zoning of which it can handle, and sales within a municipal liquor store. None of that has changed. Uh, age requirements follow um the liquor requirements of twenty-one years or older. Uh, low potency hemp beverages are permitted in places that meet the requirements of the section. Storage must be sold behind a counter, stored in a lock case. And then, as it pertains to the city with section six, the city of Black Duck may establish, own, and operate one municipal cannabis retail business subject to the restrictions in this chapter. The municipal cannabis retail store shall not be included in any limitation of the number of registered cannabis retail businesses under section two six. City of Black Duck shall be subject to all same rental requirements and procedures applicable to all other applicants. And section seven talks about use in public places. No person shall use cannabis flower, cannabis products, low potency hemp edibles, or hemp derived consumer products in a public place or a public place of public accommodation unless the premises is an established or an event licensed to formal onsite consumption of the edibles. No questions?
It's time we to ask for any questions from the public. Uh Christina, with that, there's uh no questions from the public. We will move to the next item.
Okay, um, the next ordinance to be read will be adopted under chapter eleven, our business regulations of the city code providing section eleven eighty that will be related to the local sales and use tax that was just passed during the election. This one I will read in its entirety next.
Great.
It's a little bit shorter. And city council of Black Duck, Minnesota, ordains that chapter eleven of the city code is hereby amended, providing for section eleven eighty related to the local sales and use tax by adding language to read as follows. Eleven eighty oh two, authority pursuant to session laws, two thousand twenty-three, regular such session, chapter sixty-four, article ten, section twenty-six of the Minnesota legislature has authorized the city of Black Duck to impose, collect, and administer a local sales and use tax to pay the costs of collecting and administering the tax to the commissioner and to finance up to a hundred thousand dollars plus an amount equal to interest and the costs of issuance of any bonds for the payment of capital and administrative costs to finance all or part of the design project defined below. The voters of the city of Black Duck approved the imposition of the local sales and use tax at the general election on November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Section eleven eighty oh three definitions, for the purposes of this article, the following definitions apply unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning. One, city. The city of Black Duck, Minnesota, Commissioner, the Commissioner of Revenue of the state of Minnesota, or a person to whom the Commissioner has delegated functions. Designated project, the rehabilitation of the Black Duck Community Library in the city. State sales and use tax laws and rules, those provisions of the state revenue laws applicable to the state sales and use in tax imposition, administration, collection, and enforcement, including Minnesota statute chapters two seventy C, two eighty-nine A, two ninety-seven A, and Minnesota rules part eighty-one thirty. Local sales and use tax imposed, the local sales tax is imposed in the amount of one half of one percent on the gross receipts from the sales at retail sourced within city limits, which are taxable under the state sales and use tax laws and rules. The local use tax is imposed in the amount of one half of one percent on the storage, use, distribution, or consumption of goods or services sourced within city limits which are taxable under the state sales and use tax laws and rules. All the provisions of the state sales and use tax laws and rules apply to the local sales and use tax imposed by this article. The local sales and use tax imposed by this article shall be collected and remitted to the commissioner on any sale or purchase when the state sales tax must be collected and remitted to the commissioner under the state sales and use tax laws and rules and is in addition to the state sales and use tax. Effective date of tax transitional sales. Except as otherwise provided herein, the local sales and use tax imposed by this section shall apply to the sales and purchases made on or after April first, two thousand twenty-five and shall be in addition to all other taxes now in effect. The sales and use tax is governed by Minnesota statute, chapter two ninety-seven A regarding sales that occurred during the transition. Exemption certificates. A fully completed exemption certificate taken from the purchaser to the effect that the property purchased is for resale or that the sale is otherwise exempt from the application of the tax imposed by this article will conclusively relieve the retailer from collecting and remitting the tax to the extent the seller is also relieved of liability for the sales and use tax under Minnesota statute two ninety-seven A six six five. A person who has obtained from the commissioner an exemption certificate pursuant to Minnesota statute two ninety-seven A seven-two may use such exemption certificate for the purposes of sales tax imposed by the city. Tax clearance, issuance of licenses. Pursuant to Minnesota statute two seventy C seven-two, the city may not issue a renewal license for the conduct of a trader business within the city if the commissioner notified the city clerk of the city that the applicant owes delinquent city taxes as provided in this article for penalties or interest due on such taxes. For the purposes of this section, the penalties and interest due on local sales and use taxes are included in the meaning of local sales and use taxes. Delinquent taxes does not include a tax liability if, one, an administrative or court action which contests the amount of validity of the liability has been filed or served. Two, the appeal period to contest the tax liability has not expired. Or three, the applicant has entered into a payment agreement and is current with the payments. C, applicant means the individual at the license is issued to or in the name of an individual or corporation or partnership that the license is issued to or in the name of corporation or partnership. A copy of the notice of delinquent taxes given to the city clerk of the city shall also be sent to the applicant taxpayer. In the case of renewal of a license, if the applicant requests in writing within thirty days of receipt of the notice of the hearing, then a contested hearing shall be held under the same proceed, procedures as provided in Minnesota statute two seventy A for the state sales and use tax imposed under Minnesota statute two ninety-seven A. Provided further, that if a hearing must be held on the state sales and use tax, the hearings must be combined. Deposit of revenues, cost of administration, termination of tax. All of the revenues, interest, and penalties derived from the local sales and use tax imposed by this article collected by the commissioner and remitted to the city shall be deposited by a director of finance in the city treasury and shall be credited to the fund established to pay the costs of collecting the local sales and use tax imposed by the article and to finance the capital and administrative costs directly relating to completing the designated project. The local sales and use tax imposed by this article shall terminate at the earlier of eight, March thirty-first, two thousand twelve forty-five, which is the date that is twenty years after the tax is first imposed. Or two, when the city council determines that the amount received from the tax is sufficient to pay for up to a hundred thousand dollars of the cost of the designated project, plus an amount sufficient to pay interest and the costs related to the issuance of any bonds as authorized pursuant to city code eleven eighty. Any funds remaining, due to the timing of the termination of the tax under Minnesota statute two ninety-seven A nine-nine subdivision twelve, after payment of the allowed costs and after retirement or redemption of the bonds must be placed in the general fund of the city. The tax imposed by this article may expire at an earlier time if the city so determined by ordinance. In any event, the local sales and use tax imposed under this ordinance may only terminate on the last day of the calendar quarter upon ninety days' notice to the commissioner. Bonding authority. The city may issue bonds under Minnesota statute, chapter four seven five, to finance all or portion of the costs of the project. The aggregate principal amounts of the bonds may not exceed a hundred thousand dollars for the designated project plus associated bond, bonding costs, including interest and cost of issuance of any bonds. The bonds may be paid from or secured by any funds available to the city, including the sales and use tax issued by this ordinance. The issuance of bonds is not subject to Minnesota statute two seven five six zero and two seven five six one. The bonds are not included in computing any tax, any debt limitation applicable to the city and any levy of taxes under Minnesota statute four seven five dot six one. To pay principal and interest of the bonds is not subject to any levy limitation. A separate election to approve the bonds under Minnesota statute four seven five five eight is not required. Agreement with the commissioner. The city may enter into an agreement with the commissioner regarding each party's respective roles and responsibilities related to the imposition, administration, collection, enforcement, and termination of the local sales and use tax imposed by this article. Any such agreement shall not abrogate, alter, or otherwise conflict with the state sales and use tax laws and rules this article or sessions laws to twenty twenty-three, chapter sixty-four, article ten, section twenty-six. Questions? Good. So Leah, I'm good. The person good. Awesome. A lot of small paper clips.
No Christina, I have no questions. Yes?
Questions from the public?
And do we have any questions from the public? Uh, seeing no questions from the public. Christina, thank you. All in favor? Aye, closed? Uh, call it ordered. The regular meeting of the Black Duck City Council. Please rise for the complete believing.
I put the reasons we require in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, you have the role, I assume?
Yes, now that Terry's here, I got him.
Uh, let's see, can I give approval of the season's agenda, please? Will be approved in the season's agenda?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I closed? None of the motions carried. At this time, I would like the motion to close the council meeting.
Consent agenda first.
You want the consent on first?
That's the ordering.
Okay. And all items on the consent agenda will be approved by one council motion unless we need to remove something for further discussion. The approval be.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, drive a second. Uh, any discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. The agenda is passed. Now, I will ask for a promotion to close this meeting and open a truth and taxation public hearing. And will we close the council meeting and open the twenty twenty-four truth and taxation public hearing meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
I, I closed. Christina, your report. Yeah, sorry, I just had to scroll down.
In your pocket is my report including the two thousand twenty-five general fund revenue, revenues and expenditures for their deposits and including the debt schedule. I'll go through my reports first. The purpose of the truth and taxation public hearing is to discuss the proposed property tax levy for the tax payable year two thousand twenty-five and the proposed budget of the year two thousand twenty-five. This public hearing is held to discuss and seek public comments on the city's two thousand twenty-four general fund budget and the twenty-five property tax levy. The city of Black Duck must certify its final payable twenty-five property tax levy to the county auditor no later than December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Oh. The following documentation outlines the following. I'll review the city of Black Duck twenty-five levy, the LGA payment for the state of Minnesota, tax base for the city, and twenty-five general fund expenditures and revenue sources. The twenty-five general fund budget does not balance. It will need to increase in the property tax levy, therefore the tax levy will remain as suggested from the September meeting in the amount of four hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. Which is roughly a six point two percent increase over two thousand twenty-four. This does not translate to a six percent increase for all taxpayers. Average home valued at a hundred thousand dollars with a full homestead exclusion pays roughly five hundred ninety-nine dollars a year in city taxes, which is possibly a decrease for some entities. One thing to note is that the two thousand twenty-five homestead exclusion rules did change finally. Updating the home value range from, range to ninety-five thousand on the low end, five hundred and seventeen thousand on the high end with a max exclusion of thirty-eight thousand dollars, where prior it was seventy-nine to four hundred. So for those of you that have already received their estimated property tax statement for twenty-five, then you know where your homestead exclusion is on that page, you'll see there's a fairly large difference between twenty-four and twenty-five depending on what your, your valuation is at. And I might finally went back up where it was going to be almost a goose egg last year. Black Duck is high because we have a large percentage of property that is classified non-taxable in the city. We have the school, government buildings, and lots of nonprofits, and churches. Our local government aid for next year only goes up about five hundred dollars, but we did receive a huge thirty thousand dollar increase in two thousand twenty-four, which is pretty unfair for what the state would do for us. I'm not going to go into too much more detail, that's my page two. On page three, the tax base of the city um talks about the mark, estimated market value. We did have a decrease of one percent. Um. There have been some valuations that have changed drastically in the last two years from home sales and assessed values. We also had um our apartment, some of our apartment buildings in the city also lowered their value, which decreased that estimated market value of the whole city. On page four, I talk about the net tax capacity. Um, our net tax capacity for two thousand twenty-five is at four hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred seven, seventy-nine dollars, which is a decrease from two thousand twenty-four of the both foreground. That also has related values to residential and apartment buildings. The taxable market value also went down, went down almost seven percent, which puts a bigger burden on our taxpayers. When the valuation goes down, then what's committed to everybody else can go up. But, the county is our assessing, we, we delegate the assessment to the county, so when we have our open house and our court of appeals meeting in April, I encourage everybody to meet with the assessors then. But if they really want something changed, reach out to that office down in Beltrane right away. Um, I did talk to a couple of people since the notices went out and tonight's meeting, and there have been some people that have seen a drastic increase in the valuation of their home, they haven't done anything to it, but there's been people, there's been other homes in your neighborhood that have sold. a drastic increase in the valuation of their home, they haven't done anything to it, but there's been people, there's been other homes in your neighborhood that have sold. Riding their stuff. Riding their tax up too. The next few pages, I go through the, um, I'm not missing a page, the general fund expenditures. Um, in general, the majority of our general fund expenditures, uh, public safety, which is fire and police, take up the majority of our budget. Our general government and administration takes up about another third, street departments and the street department does, and then parks, library, and street lighting are a little bit smaller, but mainly about forty percent is is our public safety. Of that expenses, most of our funding goes to personnel, then operating and equipment, so about fifty one percent of our budget is personnel. We're having about a seventy six thousand dollar increase overall from two thousand twenty four for the whole budget. That's not a lot of money, and mostly of it was personnel. Um, we're trying to continue phasing out some old, um, fired uniforms, fire department uniforms, and the department is just trying to get as many people, um, up to date on those, on that turn up here. Thank you. Um, the license center continues to increase on traffic flow and requests more operating to do so. Um, we are receiving a street, small cities, street assistance aid from the state next year of almost twenty two thousand dollars that will go to our street budget. Um, and then next year is a decrease in our planning budget because we won't be doing rental inspections.
Christina, could you say how that affected the budget? When that going into?
Oh, absolutely, yes, I can. So when the state gives you aid, kind of like our local government aid, you use that to offset any levy that you need. In the past, if we've gotten any of this street, small city street assistance money, it's never been budgeted out. Um, this is the funding that's coming from that transportation tax that's on, um, like parts, auto parts and stuff throughout the state. So the legislature got their rules together to let that money start being actually um, calculated so that each city that gets it knows what they're getting, just like LGA. So we worked that into our street materials budget, adding it to our existing street materials operating line. In most cases, it's doubling it because we don't have a ton of money in our street materials budget. But we didn't decrease the levy for that. We kept it even so that that portion of the budget of the street materials could actually have funding in it to maybe make some difference in some of our roads. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, we back. Um, just want to highlight some of the things we accomplished in two thousand twenty four and what's going to come. Um, Public Works Equipment improved their efficiencies by removing one single piece of cat equipment that combined a loader and a backhoe, and we got two separate pieces, we can be a lot more efficient in that where the one piece of equipment had to be in one place all the time and we can use it someplace else, now we have two. Our Black Duck Library Facility, we're continuing to work with Kitchigami to re- resolve some of the deficiencies, deficiencies we have in our building. Um, we have agreed to renovate the existing facility and provide a private meeting space and more square footage for books. We're going to renovate the restrooms and that's where the sales tax is going. Uh, we are getting prepared for adult use cannabis businesses that are supposed to start coming in two thousand twenty five, just went through the ordinance reading with everybody. And we said goodbye to Miller McDonald after forty years. Our local auditor, um, parted ways with the city, they've been with us since nineteen eighty four. But we are encouraged to have Clifton Larson Allen Consultants, which is a nationwide company, hopefully, to, uh, serve us just the same, not better. The local option sales tax went to the voters. After three general elections and several attempts to provide revenue from a half percent sales tax for its regionally significant projects in Black Duck, the voters have spoken. On April first of two thousand twenty five, the sales tax will increase to a total of eight and a half percent in the city and will be collected to support the library. The Black Duck Police Department got their new squad, it took several months to arrive and get equipped, but the twenty four Dodge Durangle squad took its first ride on Black Duck Streets earlier this summer. Uh, the restoration of the his- of the historic Black Duck and the Lions Duck statue is a continued effort. Um, after fundraiser raising last winter, the historic duck got many craps, cracks repaired, yeah, a fresh coat of paint and his wings and beak this summer. Plans to restore and update the lion's duck will come in twenty five. Black Duck City Hall stays downtown. In the city's efforts to keep City Hall in the heart of downtown, the city council agreed to restore and repair the deficiencies of this building. Efforts to gain funding through USDA and Belcharmy Electric Cooperative will provide a new roof to the building, remove the aging parapet, replace windows, and real locate electrical services. Plans for the renovations are anticipated in twenty six. Recycling services get an upgrade. In efforts to improve the recycling facilities in town, Belcharmy County Waste Management and the city entered into agreement to provide a compactor on public property for the community. This update removed the older bins and provided a screened alternative. Partnerships begin but don't end with Black Duck Co-op Bag Services. After two and a half years of working with Minnesota Rail Bank Authority, the completion of convenience of land to Black Duck Co-op to provide a new fertilizer plant for the area completed in twenty four. Now hopefully the building begins.
Uh, spring dirtwork is settled.
Lead service line inventory completes mandated by the federal government and the city engineering company, WITSAF, completed an inventory of the city's service lines and the two hundred and eighty nine lines inventory less than one percent need replacement. What's going off the percentages here, sorry Jim. Uh, rental licensing ordinance also updated in efforts to increase accountability to the rental properties within the city of Black Duck. Amendments to the city rental ordinance requires managers to managers of properties to be within a fifty mile radius of Black Duck. Pages eight through fifteen max go through the general fund expenditures and revenues by departments. I typically don't read this, but if anybody in the public has any questions. I can read them.
And at this time, I'd ask for all the questions. Okay, now Christina. No questions from the public? And with that.
Done with this part?
That part. Then we have the motion to close. Motion to close the truth taxation public hearing. And I have a motion and a second. For any further discussion. All in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Motion carries. I get a motion to open. The open our regular schedule. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, back to, uh, what we're doing. Uh, if there's anybody here for the Black Duck forum, be happy to give you your three minutes. We will move to reports, committees and staff, and I see apparently Mike's not first anymore.
Not this time, I'm going to do too much stuff.
All right, we'll go, we'll write to the fire department.
Um, so we have a number of, uh, documents for the council to, um, review and discuss tonight. Um, Terry and I have been working since the work session to provide to the board the necessary documents you need to, um, consider this proposal from McQueen. Patrick has, uh, provided us an updated proposal on the discussed, um, from the November work set, work session. And I have discussed the potential bonding of the gap of funding that the city would need in order to pay this upfront. Um, our financial advisor Todd Hagan will be on call. I'll get a little late on the B dump by the time he gets here. Um, regarding if we, the city may bond at a time before we actually take delivery, which is allowable. So, um, with that, I believe the numbers right now are at three, we would bond for three hundred and sixty three thousand dollars, which should make up plus take care of the cost of issuance to pay for the units upfront. The rest of it will all be handled by current special equipment fund balances. The commitment from the fire relief's twenty four donation. Um, and this year's, the two thousand twenty fours contract payment.
That mean not me either, based on what the possible donation was going to be.
Fantastic. But when we met in November, um, Terry thought that that number might be like one thirty one, one thirty.
Yeah, we're pulled to the one seventy mark.
Fall off my chair here. Wow.
Okay.
So, there's a lot of literature here for you guys to review. Um, what questions have you come up with since the work session?
That was the big one. Was are we going to be able to cover it and on the, on the tail end of it, you know, do we take the gamble, can we, and could be, but we didn't know if we could bond for it to begin with. To bond for something that wasn't here.
We can bond for it and we can pay it off early without penalties as well.
Yeah.
And that was one of the fire relief's concerns as well. Um, it would save us about a hundred and twenty five grand to pay it upfront. Um, as you see, subsequent after this first item, um, I have the council's consideration of a couple of, uh, resolutions. Um, if the city is, wants to move forward with this, we would pass those resolutions tonight, allowing Todd Hagan to put out for bids that three hundred and sixty three thousand dollars to local banks. We'd accept whichever bid was lowest on the January sixth council meeting, at which point all of the paperwork and closing would happen on mid to late January, which means on a timeline, we'd be able to pay McQueen probably by your meeting, I'm thinking, Terry.
By the end of January?
I believe so. I believe so.
Yeah, because I would bet McQueen was probably going to be looking at another increase probably right around February one, because they have their last increase on November one.
Okay. Well.
Then with, you know, with what I've read from going through this and the thing from Ellers, I, I think it's a good idea, I think we got it, really. I think that the save, the savings of a hundred and twenty five thousand and putting it up front, that's.
Yeah, and if you, you know, um, I want to thank Terry for putting the age of the unit that the, the fire department's working with right now and more perspective for the city to really gather, it's going to take us four years to get this next.
Correct.
Yeah, so the equipment, which means the O two is just going to be that much older by the time we take delivery on it. Guys have a run tonight.
No, that was counter. And is the total prepaid members not paid until the end of January that accepted bids from McQueen? Or is? Yeah, as long as it's before the, uh, the next rating brings. If it's not, then the numbers change a little bit. So they gave us a new proposal to sit in this ballot for thirty days, but we, we would accept the proposal prior to that, and was just, they would agree to allow the check to be delivered at the end of January. That's great.
I believe what would be acceptable in, in, um, McQueen's position is the city would agree and vote on this proposal run. Sign it, which would solidify those numbers. We'd make sure McQueen understands that we have to bond for the gap. But that actually puts us in a better position. Also knowing, like you just said, that the donation from the relief is different than what we just discussed two and a half weeks ago, that gives us a little wiggle room in terms of costs. Um, we'd still bond for the full amount that Todd has provided to us, but, um, we have that ability to cover an overage if it were to go over February one.
If we were to go over, they haven't specifically said yet if it was going to be a major increase on February one, but just on your timelines. It'd be a hundred and one percent, which is obviously a little tempo. Yeah, I think you can drag our feet and then get another increase or you can, now we're make a move on this.
Right. Um, when, uh, Max, when you guys are done discussing or asking questions, then I'll ask for approval of the proposal and then subsequently the two resolutions after the M C.
Todd will be here to answer.
Oh, I know he's at another meeting, so he thought he'd be here just before seven, so it really depended on our timeline here.
Good.
Important for the council to understand that, um, because the amount that we'd be bonding for, for that difference, um, exceeds our, our net tax capacity. We have to make sure that the resolution is published in the paper. Um, we did that when we did the public works equipment this past summer as well. Um, but knowing that the purchase is for, um, emergency managers for a, a, a necessary piece of equipment. Typically, you don't get any pushback from the voters, but that is something that has to be done by statute.
This was a comment on tax dollars anyways. Basically.
No, I mean, I foresee this thing, that's why, that's why we asked for, and no pay that penalty, should I, I foresee the same, hang it off, maybe in two years. To make four years of dollars and we figured out.
Yeah, I think.
Absolutely.
And, uh, yeah, so. Ron, anything? No, all the other questions? No. I think we should just, uh, ask for a motion to approve all these, a motion to approve, uh, for the Pierce. Okay, those will, yeah. Further inspection. And all those in favor?
Aye.
I closed. None. Motion carries.
All right. You need a motion for a pre sale. Yeah, I'm moving on, yeah, yeah, just give me a minute, we should catch up. So the pre sale report is what Todd would be reviewing when he was here. Um, I did send this to you guys early enough, did you have any questions on it?
I think our rates would be just out of curiosity.
And they don't really guess, but the current coupon that they put into the, um, pre sale report was five point two five percent. That they put into the, um, pre-sale report was five point two five percent. I can't remember what we'd end up with the cat equipment this summer, but I know it was less than that. And Huntington was the winning bidder, so. My guess is I'll probably be, probably them again. There's only a couple of banks in the state that are really doing it. But it's a good, it's a good bond, a good dollar amount for what. It's being used for, so maybe we'll get that. Maybe we'll get a lower bid. Than what was estimated by. Um, if you don't have questions regarding this process, then I would request that you move on.
No, we've done it before.
Okay. And then Todd gets on here, will the stones too late?
Where he did it, we don't.
This is old hat. Um, then I would ask you move on to C max and ask for appro- approval of resolution twenty-four twenty.
Then that's what we should do. We'll see if we approve revolution for you. For twenty twenty-four next week. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries.
So you've approved that you've determined it's necessary to issue the bonds, now you need to approve. To provide the sale of that equipment certificate, so please, uh, call for two, two thousand twenty-four twenty-one.
And I will need a motion to approve. Resolution twenty-two four twenty-one.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-four twenty-one.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. They're done, motion carries.
I think he thought he might be here seven o'clock, but it really kind of depends on the other city that he's working with.
So we moved too quick, sorry.
We're efficient. Terry? You guys have any other?
They're welcome.
Questions?
No, I think it's.
Overdue.
Discussion. Okay.
Thank you for your work on it, Terry, bestest. Christine.
Yep, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good night.
Law enforcement report.
Uh, I provided this to you guys last year.
Yes.
I think that's why you thought Josh might be here, but.
All that and his names up there.
Well. I just wanna point out, although I summarized a lot of it, that there was an enormous amount of increase in haul volumes for two thousand twenty-four. Your new officer, Amston, has done a really wonderful job in the community. Um, I wanna point out that the public relations calls that are noted in this report. More than ninety percent of them were at the school. Working with the kids. Yeah, that, the voice and girls. He's been receiving really well, he had, he had presents there. Granted, you know. Every, every officer's call list is different and whatever happens, but. I'm very pleased with how been turned on her department.
Yeah, this is a. A big. I'll, I'll just come up, it's a, it's a big improvement.
Above the year before, yeah. Yep.
One museum. Sure you come. Good job.
Yeah, thank him for his service, especially after the red light officer that lasted.
Yes, I, I, I did attend the wake. For Jesse Officer Branch. It was well, it was very well attended, as you can imagine.
Yeah.
You never, you never know. Um, about anything else for? Our police department? Ben, Mike, you've. Been sitting there long enough.
Well, I just get to deflect everybody else that's on here. I'll let Christine go first.
This is a. Good.
So what I have for you guys to approve is Minnesota Pump Works in the, uh, in invoice for the repairs to the main lift station. And I added, uh, Jolson's. Um, as well because they were there assisting, we added that today. Not in the header, but it would be combined. Um, and then I updated where the ARPA summary of funds, um. Came out, you can see that. Minnesota Pump Works, they, they estimated their quote was for twenty-four to ninety for the services. Ended up twenty-six thousand, six ninety-seven and some change. Um, so we had like forty-six hundred dollars left in our, um, our COVID money. So we'll pull from there to pay for part of that. And then the remaining is, uh, as agreed to earlier this fall to pay from the sewer maintenance reserve fund. So what I'm asking for the council tonight is to approve. That payment from that fund. For both the Jolson's and Minnesota Pump Works.
I move with approved payment from sewer, sewer fund. To cover the necessary amount for Minnesota Pump Works and do some invoices.
Yep. Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Question, Ron? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very none. Motion carries. It's not like we, like, come on. You know, gotta, gotta. And with that, I, I have one question, Mike. Is there a story that goes along with the, uh, streetlights on Frontage Road?
A really long one. It's been years of headache for me.
Yeah, you, you briefed us on it before, but.
As far as.
Apparently it had a successful outcome.
Yeah, I was gonna touch on that, I was gonna let everybody else go first and then kinda give you my little rundown and everything, but yeah, it was, uh. Similar to what it's been every year. Dig, find break, fix it. It just keeps burning itself back, so. We're gonna hopefully this next year. With, uh, the addition of the new mini hole that we have now. And knowing where it is, I've traced that line many a times and there's nothing else around it. That first section, we should at least be able to. Drop in place or dig the. Dig the trench for it, you know, we'll have somebody come and actually hook it up that's, you know, licensed for that, but. That should hopefully help. See what happens, I'm guessing at some point in time, we're gonna have to bore. To the next two lights down as well. But yeah, it's been. Like pretty much every year, I think, since I've been here, we've been digging and. Patching it together.
Does that affect the? The parking lot at Levers?
There's craziness going on down there right now, and what it is, we don't know. Um, we checked, uh, the bulbs there. Or checked the, the photo eyes. Those were found to be working fine. Um, and then all of a sudden, half the lights popped back on. And we're on for a week or so, and now they're out again. So we, uh, we actually had, uh, if you saw it, we had a lift in town. And we ran around and replaced more street light heads, once they got those, we got those done and. We were gonna go after. There's one last one that. Really shouldn't be ours, but we've been over this way up at the end of, uh, Main Street and seventy-two up there. Uh, we were gonna replace that and we were gonna go up and, and do those, but. It started raining pretty hard that day and it was windy and, you know, just kinda thought, eh, maybe with electricity we're awake. Though we're gonna be trying to go after that. Probably next week. But, uh, with some new bulbs from over there. It's been found that there is a, um, a breaker in levers that operates those, so. What kind of question if, you know, whoever's shutting down at night maybe is accidentally. Dropping that off some nights and, cuz it's, it's been really odd going on, we updated those to LED bulbs. Not that long ago and they, they should last longer than what they have, I did order some new bulbs for that and.
Because that was, that was my question was is that. So are those our lights? Cuz it's on the pond side or is it on the?
Well, so, there, there's an agreement, um, from many years back.
Ah.
And yeah, one of those, one of those setups, um. And if I, if I recall right, you know, we own the property that they're on. We own the lights.
Fixer, yeah.
Yep. Well, it's actually kinda weird, cuz if you read it. Levers is responsible for the fixture heads on their side. But we're responsible for the maintenance for. From here on out. So it's kinda like, well, that's both people responsible. Um, but basically what we've been doing is. We maintain, they pay the power. Because there's two lights that shine north, you know, on the pond and two that shine south and. You know, really, it's probably about the best agreement that you could have. For what it is on. You know, they're probably. It costs us more, you know, on a maintenance level than I'm sure what it costs them for power wise. Especially with the LED bulbs in there and probably. For the two lights is costing them. Fifteen bucks a month or so, I'd say.
I'm not trying to split hairs over that.
No, no, but just to get a little bit of background on it anyways, so yeah, we're. We're working towards figuring it out, we went up and, you know, pulled one and like you said, we were gonna go after it and then it rained and everything came and.
But not.
That's the story there. All the streetlight story.
The whole streetlight story, yeah. Uh, anything else, Mike? Snow, any?
Nope, haven't seen any snow, no. What we did last night, this morning. Try to get out ahead of it, try to get here before. We probably made much of a mess of it, so we ran last night and again this morning. Did more than we generally do, you know, I. The, the parking is the same, you know, the same battle that we fight every year, um. Having Travis around, you know, him and I have already spoke on it and have, uh. A good beat to what we're gonna do, kinda what we started. Four years ago, you know? Um, so we're, we're trying to kinda work on that and. You know, hopefully people just gotta get the point and stuff and then, you know, there's some other. Areas in town, you know, that. You know, I, I, I hate doing it. But I gotta tell people know a lot, you know, when it comes to snow. And, and what I mean by that is. You know, we don't have time to go and plow. Every residence. Driveway out, you know, we, we don't have time to go. Do specific businesses and things like this and, you know, a lot of, a lot of times I think. People kinda think we're a bunch of a-holes, you know, about it, but it's just. It's not feasible for us, and if we do it, you know. For one, you do it for everybody type of deal, with that said though, um. When, when it comes to, you know, people that needed, uh, uh, a, a one-time help here and there and stuff, you know, I've always encouraged people to reach out about that. You know, if something happens, their stuff breaks down, whatever, we will go, we will help. It's just a reminder that we do live in northern Minnesota and you need to be. Prepared for the snow, it's, it's. Not my problem that you have a snowbank, unfortunately, it, it has to go somewhere. It can't magically melt it all.
Has that? Has the new building for the school, has that been a?
Had to go there, didn't you?
I, I do have to go there because I, I see, I see a snow pile where I don't normally see snow pile.
Yeah, there's, um.
County loves that.
Yeah.
They haven't said anything yet, the county that I'm aware of, it's, it's. You know, you got three separate entities. Moving snow around that same corner, basically. We did discuss it. When I found out that building was coming, you know, I, I talked a little bit with, you know, maintenance at the school and. Cuz there was always a huge pile on that corner, right? You know, that's where they put snow, that's where we kinda put snow. Everything like that. Um, with the new building there now, they're cleaning the entirety of that lot. Right there. And it seems to be finding its way right to the street there. Um. I think that pile's gone now. My guys, my guys were over there today.
I saw a couple pieces of equipment.
Yeah, yeah, and the, you know. To dance around it, but not dance around it, that was the last time that we'll be cleaning that pile. Until there's. Some sort of agreement or something in place, I mean. If I'm running two guys and two pieces of equipment for a couple hours, you know, that adds up pretty quick every time it snows, and it, it takes time away from us.
Isn't that right in front of those garage doors that, uh?
And that's the other thing, where that pile got was in front of the, the garage for the apartments, now, I don't know that those garages are really used much anymore or not, but either way. You know, the other problem there is too, really in all honesty, um. For a- as long as I think the school's been there. That entire road doesn't get plowed like everything else does. Pretty much every other road in town, you plow two ways, right? Snow goes each way. That road, all the snow goes to the west. Every ounce of it, that's part of why you get so much snow. On that side of the road. And that's essentially always been done as a benefit to the school.
I see.
Mind you, that is a coming road.
Yes.
So. I. I don't have much. To do about it. You know, although last night we did plow the whole thing, so. It's a. It's kind of an odd deal there. But there, there does, there is gonna have to be a conversation about the snow because. Um, on that lot itself, the, the northwest corner towards the fire hall. There was also a big pile that ended up eight, nine, ten feet, no, not the duck one. Um, just on the east side of the alley. That ended up, you know, eight plus feet out into the road and. We, we can't have that, so. That, that block there, that's between the fire hall and choice therapy. Um, my thought there. It, it's gonna change things up a little bit for us. But my thought there is to turn that block into kinda, you know, when I started five, six years ago, whatever, now what I did with.
Yes.
Um, this block here and this one here. With instead of plowing everything up onto the curb, you know, for the business owners, residents, whatever. What we started doing was putting it to the middle and hauling it out. You know, sometimes it takes us a little while to get there, but we put it to the middle and it's gone within a day at most. So I'm guessing that's probably what we're gonna end up doing with that block up there too, just because. You know, we can't have any snow in front of the fire hall, twice therapy is right there. There's, you know, all the cars from the school overflow and everything that parked there and it, it gets to be kind of a disaster right there, so. That's most likely gonna end up being one of them that we do that way as well. And that's kind of. You know, to touch a little bit on. Kind of what I said earlier about. Um. Us. Not being responsible for everyone's snow, I know there's. There's certain places near to these two blocks here. That we don't do what we do right here, that. I've, I've heard some things on snow and the city should have to do it and this and that, it's a hard thing to, where do you start, where do you stop, I mean. I, I can't put every block in this town to the center and try to haul it out, I'll, but we'll be hauling snow until June, you know what I mean? So unfortunately, there is, you know, kinda some sides just past these blocks that. You know, are, are just gonna have to contract with someone, oh, you, you own a building here, you run a business or even a home. You gotta know that the snow is coming and you gotta have some way to get rid of it.
I mean, seems fair to me, I'm just.
We, we try to do, you know, we try to be as fair as we can, even right down to plowing the alleys, you know, it's. Go one way, you know, pushing snow to one side, come. Go one way, you know, pushing snow to one side, come back the other way pushing, try to give everybody.
Just a little bit.
Their fair share of the snow, basically, you know. I know some some people like to say it's not their snow, it's my snow and not really my snow, I didn't put it there. I just gotta move it. Um. Oh, what else? Did I have anything else really? Oh, God. I think that's about it for this one. Um just to touch on, I can't remember if we did or not, I think we did. Um the lift station rehab, the numbers being down, did we touch? Okay, wanted to make sure on that. That's about it. We're into winter mode now. Snow, snow, snow.
Put a bit on lift stations in here.
Well, we will segue over to that then. It's his turn. How about it?
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, guys.
Alright.
Just like to kind of do that uh to do a quick recap of what we did this year. This year, I actually put a bit, we worked. A lot of different departments up here, um. These building studies on this building and the library of the architects and structural mechanical people and stuff like that and then. Our environmental department is working with Mike, updating the overhead protection plan, which is gonna be in effort in the twenty-five. Uh one thing that Duncan didn't mention is that probably isn't getting drafted by the end of the month, that's gonna be something that's coming up. Our GIS department is still working with Christina to do the cemetery thing and praying all that and that whole interior. Stuff like that. And then Jim and I work the light service line thing for most of the summer, that's uh. And then um we didn't get a draft of EROs last month, so hopefully everybody's enjoying it.
I don't think it's been good.
Yeah. Um and neither of you can put the comments on that for everyone. And then the letter two, we just. Uh remind everybody of the list of services we do offer for free and all of them different apartments and areas that we cover, so.
And I know it doesn't always, not every meeting. Doesn't seem like we need you here, but it's appreciable that you guys are.
Again, we try to use the letter to reiterate that we truly appreciate the relationships that we have with the city, but possibly when the staff, so you thank you for that.
That's pretty much suggested on there. Um I can kind of move on to the next phase of.
The next phase.
Yeah, it's not done though. At least the image for you.
We do have actually kind of panels we need together.
But this is the part where we have sort of a realize that this is a much bigger undertaking than they first anticipated.
Um we're getting there, but this will be the big year, they'll be able to buy you the funding and that's kind of where we're.
Right.
Heading of this, so obviously, yeah, everything was pushed by the EPA and then the state took it over with. Consultants. And all those inventories are now available. There's a link on that sheet, um it's a GIS platform and it can also be added to. Mike's at some point, believe I believe, uh you can go on there and look at pretty much any city and state if you want to, sure, if you don't know, sort of. But I mean, that's actually kind of a neat little tool that I wanna know. Um but yeah, the next step is funding, so I think we kind of mentioned last reading that. Um this winter, we're gonna be flying. Through PSA, but Department of Health is gonna kind of run it. Um to be regulated, there's been a lot more applications coming in than normal, generally all that application. Looked at it's. A real brief description of the system, which is something that's pretty quickly depressed, but we learned to do all that information. Um real small summary of the needs for the project. And then some alternatives and cost estimates and stuff like that. Uh. So all we fared was was ninety-four unknowns. So those ninety-four unknowns, thirty-one of them were on the customer side, so. The Department of Health provides with looking at curb stop in the house.
We have to talk about that, though. You and I need to get together. I was talking with uh. Oh, no, I can't remember his name now, from Minnesota Rural Water and discussing that with him. He's their head. Lead guy, basically, that that's all he does, yeah, I know. Um and I discussed that with him and he said that there is. A way to change that with them so that they're not putting that on us as a utility side. So we'll have to get together.
Look, I get it, that's, you know, originally it was, I don't know that they changed them, well, through the Department of Health.
Yep, yep, he said basically the two. Um the two gals that don't remember their names that are kind of in charge of all of this, you know, that are relatively new, but it all in. Together, I guess. There's some stuff going on with it because we are not the only city that this is this way, like he said, there's thirty-nine, fifty-nine, something like that. Of us that are this way and we're all saying the same thing, that it's not a utility side thing. So there is something that we have to figure out on that.
Well, that would have to be new guidance, because everything that we've asked them is they said, no, there's gonna be a differentiation between. Herb stop and main and herb stop and all, so.
And it's it's mainly because for the most part nationwide, everybody is the other way. You know, where the the utility does own up to the curb stop, including the curb stop. But there's enough of us now that are saying, hey, it's the you're you're squeezing us when we don't need to be squeezed.
Well, but in the grand scheme of things, it'll be okay because uh ultimately to replace the lead's lines will be grant dollars. Whether it's municipal based or city based, or I mean that quite a lot of communities.
Right, however, the only way to verify those, you know, unknowns is to dig to them, right?
Well, we don't know yet.
Yeah, see, that's that's the caveat of the whole thing and that's where, even though it's been going on for four years now, this thing is, you know. A dog chasing its own tail, that's the way it's been the whole time. But anyways, I not to bring it up with everybody, but we do need to get together on that.
Yeah, well. I mean, yeah, we're clearing down, no one's down a lot.
Yeah, quite a bit.
Yeah, what we anticipate is there's going to be another technical round through the Department of Health every year anticipation, which because. Out of all the inventories that were done, I think they indicated two hundred and fifty thousand service lines are still identified as unknowns. And so, you know, what we're suggesting is that we go ahead and apply for the. Grant dollars and be on a private priority list and that would. In a sense, give the impetus for the Department of Health to figure out how are we gonna try to get that number of unknowns down because, you know, they're obviously not. Service lines to replace them, we find out, you know, it's not like, so we anticipate there would be another round to hopefully try to bring them in.
Yeah, and yeah, so by May second, we. Well, before that, we will apply for ninety-four unknown replacements, no, we dealt with those replacements, knowing that they'll probably get around to looking for unknowns. The galvanize may move forward quicker. Um but all that timeline kind of works is you apply for the PPL by name. And that's through PSA slash Department of Health for the regulating this. And then PSA has the IUP that's due June sixth, such as their intended use plan. Um I ask if you're like a hundred percent sure you want to do that, so I do next year and apply for that, because that application has only been for one. Um it's quite as big as I think, so I'll be pretty sure. We're gonna move forward with everything, um and then typically. Within sixty months after that IUP is submitted, they're gonna find out if they're funding or not and then you would start on the plans and stuff like that.
Is this something the homeowner could do or those two?
So the city is gonna regulate everything, so if the homeowner got a letter um saying their service is galvanized and unknown. They should come forward to the city and say they'd like to replace it. I mean, we're gonna include them anyway.
We would have to, because if they go and do it on their own now, they're not gonna be able to fund it for them unless it's under way through.
And for the private side of it, um spending a lot more discussion. Um that would be a hundred percent grant funded, whereas the city part of it would be. Partially grant funded and a partial old known interest loan that they will reimburse since it's we grant funded, but. But that's. Will apply for all that in the very earliest, then we'd be maybe looking at construction. But more realistically. They get all probably pushed just because, like Tim is saying, there's gonna be another round of. Probably gonna be another.
But the funding is there to manage.
There is money available, but not nearly enough to do everybody's.
So that's why we're recommending for our communities that we go on and get on with this, right, because. At least in stocking in what the need is and whether the funds are there, it'll have to hopefully be another round of funds. So just make sure we're aligned with the funding and, you know, works out timing wise, we do have. Uh new year engineering report that we're working on for the larger project in town. We just having that a chance to overlay that to see how that comes into fruition with some stuff that will be right up in the face anyway. So, but we'll just make the um lead line replacement a part of the engineering report.
Any questions on here after they got that one shoe?
When you're applying for this grant funding, is there? Is this like, is there a way they, I mean, communities aren't gonna be denied, I mean, this is supposed to be a federal mandate, so. You know, was that, is that a possibility?
Well, it's a possibility that being the paper to run out of funding, but I think there again, the. Crust behind that is it'll get them in mind to come up with that next round, how do we get this number challenge to be reasonable?
So it's just, I'm hearing the government from here to help.
Well, I think, you know, we didn't, uh, need lead, obviously lead. The Delman I had, I'm gonna try to clean up some of these unknowns, but.
Yeah, we're interested to see what happens because the way it works is you're um giving a score based on um. You know, what's in the report, anyone that's uh identified as unknown or galvanized or led. They all funded stats, and so all these products receive the funding level of us shores. So we're probably need household or our community or recommendation to pursue the PPL with the PUS. If you're sold and finding this sort of work, if you want to think about it and. Cause our goal would be is these aren't due until May, but we're suggesting it'll still keep that work done.
Welcome to make take action on that tonight or just uh January meeting.
We'll leave that up to you, guys.
I don't have on the agenda for you though.
It's not technically, so we.
Right, I'd rather just wait until I've had it for them to move on.
Yep, yep.
You know, like the online submit a little here, there's no letter one.
Uh with that, did any of the council, you guys all have a little fun with your?
I'll have a bus.
With your books?
Any comments on yet? Well enough sleepless nights for you yet?
Well, I'm gonna have nightmares after looking at lift stations.
Right?
I I have a new respect for it, Mike. But yeah, but you know, I saw some of that in there and I. But no, I haven't come across anything that's jumping out of me to be included in the report.
The three motel ones pulled together us.
Yeah. That's that that is a MacGyver situation and it's fine, it's going on in that one.
We had a, we actually had someone in it when it left. A couple summers ago. Needless to say, they had to go home that day and ride in the back of the pickup.
Yeah, I'm sure the volume that that lift station is taking is not, is not what it's developed for.
Well, everything from um the bar, you know, from the pond and from levers.
Is going there.
Goes into that tiny little lift station.
Yeah.
Right, so you know, that's what it says in the report too. Um then with that, thank you, guys. Uh Christina? I will turn it over to you at this point.
Thanks, I'm gonna help Garrett um he's here tonight to uh talk to the council. Uh about getting some partnership, I pulled a GIS map up for you guys, you can your packet, um.
Yeah, I guess I just.
Tell them what you wanna, what you need help with.
Try and get this from the state, like you guys helped the co-op get from the state. Cause we're purchasing this property right here from uh.
Your junkyard?
Yeah. What's the name, Shoffner's?
Shoffner's, yeah.
Yeah, so this goes all the way down here, but I'm not interested in any of that, it's just from here up, so we gain this over.
This used to be the old siding for the railroad.
Yeah, it's an old spur.
Yeah.
Talked to the state guy and he said, yeah, that would be, he would let that.
Really? That was a spur?
Yeah, a for future spur, is what he said, but.
Oh.
Off the railroad that would come in and.
Back up and turn around.
I was gonna say, if there was ever a railroad there, it prenanced me and I go back to where it was.
No, it was, it was never there, it was.
It was just.
So, you said the state has no interest in keeping it, so.
So you're gonna be the new owner of that that property?
Shoffner's, yeah, we're real close to closing the deal there, so.
And and what's your intent for the property?
We're just stockpiling gravel there now.
Okay.
Gravel, granite, on the hand, black dirt.
Do you think you'll go, I guess, what the property line, does the property line go here or here?
I think this would be the problem.
No, the forty's?
This is the line here.
That is the line, okay. So would you be asking the state for all of that?
Yeah.
Or just where your road, where your entrance?
No, all the way down right to this line.
Okay.
Yep. That way the property line comes right out, then this will be the right away for the county road here.
Got it.
Yeah.
I need your help to paint that, I guess.
Yeah, I I dropped a resolution like we did for um Bill and the co-op. For you to formally prove and then I'd start working with the state and Garrett to make sure that. Their um. Uh people that are looking for the land description, you know, the value and then we act as the middle. Uh middle land, if you will, with the money.
Sell to the Indian, right?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, fine, all for it.
Yeah, you've done a lot of uh well, improvements. To the piece of property, is that building gonna come down, you think?
Yeah, it's gonna dissolve. If I need a permit to take it though.
Uh you don't need demo permit.
What, what?
We don't need no thinking permits.
Get more stuff out of it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that's a, does anybody have any questions for Garrett or others?
Easy enough.
No, this is one, another one of those, we don't need to think about this, this is an easy one, Garrett.
I'll draft the resolution for them to prove in January sixth meeting, because they don't do a work session.
Oh, good.
And then once that's done, um you and I can work with the state and start figuring out.
I hope it doesn't take you as long as the co-op said.
Well.
Well, they changed their mind, have uh two thirds of the way through.
Well.
The speed of, speed of.
I think there's a difference in this versus crossing the rail bank. That's what un- unfortunately is. Took the co-op longer was because the state would only allow one um easement across.
All.
The rail bank. The rail bank. In, in, in Garrett's situation, he's just asking for the piece of property.
Yeah.
They don't need to maintain it or own it because it doesn't have any improvements to it, the railroad was never there. This should obviously be easier.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Once already, huh?
Yeah, yeah, but the state doesn't work very fast, I figured that one out. So.
Weird.
Yeah.
Well, that's good, I mean, any positive uses of a property, commercial property that's.
Yeah.
Not being used and not being used properly is uh something we should be in favor of, so that helps you. Make a nice operation there, it's gonna benefit everybody.
Yeah, they also need stockpile in there, because we can only get granite out of Lake River up there Tuesdays, Wednesdays. But we get a lot of calls Monday, Wednesday, or the Thursdays and Fridays, you know, so let's stockpile up there. There we go. Onward.
Nope.
That's your end of patience.
I'm watching it.
Oh. Um, next, the first item I need uh. Action taken on tonight is uh Resolution twenty four fifteen. This will approve the final tax levies collectible in two thousand and twenty five.
Here it is. I get a motion to approve this, please.
Motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty four dash fifteen.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. Hearing none, the motion carries.
The uh, item C is Resolution twenty four sixteen, adopting a schedule of fees and charges for two thousand and twenty five.
We didn't read the note in you.
Uh, no, Ron, nothing was changed from the work session that I discussed with you guys.
I saw the word.
That was, yeah, just thirty two and thirty three, that's all I updated.
Yeah, I all moved, we approved the Resolution twenty four sixteen, fees and services for twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
And then item D is to approve ordinance two thousand twenty four oh two, amending chapter eleven. Business regulations of the city code, providing the section eleven seventy, regulating county businesses. Motion to approve twenty twenty four dash oh two.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
I.
I. Opposed. All considered.
Uh, item D is ordinance two thousand twenty four oh three, amending chapter eleven, business regulations of the city code, providing for section eleven eighty. Related to the local sales and news tax.
Uh, that one didn't load for the public hearing.
The ordinance did not? Oh, I apologize.
Didn't load for any of the public hearing or this. But you read it out loud, so.
I did, um, I wonder if it's the virgin tab.
It's literally, yeah, we've seen it before.
Okay, my apologies on that. Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh.
And a second, any discussion? All is in favor? I opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Okay, item F is for council consideration tonight, um, going back to the city hall renovations, um. Prior to the last meeting, uh, shoot, I don't have anything. Uh, Beltrami Electric Cooperative provided me an environmental services checklist. To start working on, to provide to USDA for the application for their revolving loan fund. And there is a section in there to have an environmental, thank you, environmental site assessment. On the city hall, um, there's a couple others in there that obviously. Uh, they need to know if the project affects a wetland, it doesn't, we need to provide a map showing that city hall is not a wetland. Um, is it in a flood plain? No, we need to provide the map showing it's not, and a couple other things. But this particular, and, and the Beltrami Electric's got um, G I S staff. They're working on those maps so that there's little um, issues with um, any costs to create this. But a phase one environmental service assessment. Is requested if it's been uh, um, created or prepared, excuse me, for any projects totaling over a hundred thousand dollars. Obviously, our project totals over a hundred thousand dollars, we've not done any S A, um, Woodset. May provide that service to us, but it will cost the city money to put that together, this is not something. Beltrami Electric has the staff to put together. Um, so I had asked uh Tim and Caleb to provide um a proposal and the cost assess associated with that. Um, to provide that portion to USDA. Um.
This would be. Paid for out of administrations?
Yes, it would be paid for out of my budget unless I can uh request funding for it. With the loan that we get from um USDA to pay back to. But either way, we're gonna end up paying for it. Would we pay for it now or may include it later? Um, much like when we did the public works facility, you know, there was, there were things that we had to have in line first. Before we even bonded and went out to bid to build the facility and had to pay for. This is one of those things. Can you provide kind of like an overview of what N S A basically does?
I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but typically you'll see it being requested upon the funding basis. We just wanna make sure we're not inherently kind of like, uh, patrolling the problem or anything like that. So it's just, they do a record research of what was here and. Somebody will come and physically look at the building to make sure that there's like no, very attention. So they're just trying to kind of make sure that there's a guarantee of not inherently.
It's been commercial or bank since nineteen oh something.
Yeah.
It's fairly low, the only thing it will be. Slightly. Toxic will be any coal gas, basically.
The nice thing is, is that regardless of what happens with Beltrami Electric Cooperative and then that funding, if they get that approved and pass on to us. Is at least the report is the possession of the cities. So if for some reason we end up having to find another resource for funding for this project. We already have this in place.
We don't do it.
We don't have to do it again, okay?
I think we may be limited to release that. So we'd have to um allow a release to a different funding.
Yeah. Do we have any idea what the? Yeah, that's why the proposal is inherent, thirty eight hundred dollars, but thirty eight hundred dollars.
Yes.
Well, I have one question on the, the checklist, did we complete that or did we miss it?
Uh, the checklist was completed by me, um, that I did ask for guidance from uh Tim and his team on uh quite a few of them. Um, and I worked with Beltrami Electric on a couple other things, that's why I went to them first and told them what things I know I didn't have. Um, like when I asked, when I stated about the wetland and the flood plain map. Chances are, what I told Beltrami Electric, is it's easy to just say no. But if you can't prove it, they're just gonna kick it back to you. That's why they say, is a wetland map attached, is a FEMA map attached? If it's not, they're just gonna say, do it over.
Yeah, and the only reason I ask is, should it reflect the property at eight, Summit Avenue East?
Probably had twenty four on here, good call, they put that in there, not me.
Who's naming?
Uh, Beltrami Electric, Bob Gregg started this and then sent it to me. I read right past the address, so incorporating her on.
Twenty four would be somewhere in Anderson.
It would be.
Building, I think.
Yep.
Somewhere in Mary, February.
Yes, you're right. I'll make sure that that's noted when I uh speak with Bob Gregg again, thank you.
But we don't wanna spend thirty eight hundred on their building.
I don't.
Um. Okay, so this is just another consideration, fast on the sixth.
On the sixth, for tonight, since I have the document.
Well, yeah, the thing to keep in mind too is these do take a while, because either we have to go get the records and do some research, so it's about a three day window, so just depending on timing. Making a pattern decision.
I, I put consideration on there because of the discussion, if you want to push it off, you can. I would like to get this approved if the council's um, ready to do so and understands it, otherwise I'm just adding three more weeks to the timeline.
No.
Thanks.
I, I've already made my speed of government joke once.
And Duncan will be up here on the eighth for a well hit protecting, anyway, he's been talking about, you know, the show, he will come and do a site visit at that time.
Oh, that would be fabulous.
Yeah.
The eighth of this month. Oh, listen up, yeah, okay. Well, approval, one, wire and full site assessment for the city hall?
Second.
Discussion? All is in favor?
I.
I, I opposed.
Um, the last thing I just provided to you um in your packet, I'm hoping you can open it, is uh the twenty five appointments and designations. Um, that we don't approve this until the January meeting, um. If there's.
Where we make changes?
If you're going to make changes, please consider that. Um, obviously, uh, a council member's been rotated for vice mayor, um, we would. Recommend doing that, I will be making some updates to it as well, our count, our, our county assessor is no longer Joe Skier, it's Caleb.
That's what.
Thank you, yep, so that will change, um, and uh. I usually need to get ahold of somebody at the history center because I'm always worried I have. The preservation committee wrong or somebody unfortunately has passed on and I didn't know. But um, yeah, if there's any other rotation that's. Needed or wanted by the board. We need to move that around.
He hasn't been, but he's got.
All right. Your turn. Nobody else put it through. Pretty much.
Oh, I got uh careful.
Um, so maybe digest this over the holidays and we can make the changes and then we put it on January sixth.
Yeah, there's. There's something who wants off, he wanna get, you don't wanna be on that committee anymore and then keep it. Better for something else.
Yeah, I, that's great, yeah.
Pretty true, we're not, we're not gonna have any problem.
Uh, otherwise, Max, I just have a couple of reminders on some dates, December twenty fourth, Christmas Eve, Blackett City Hall and the DMV closes at noon. December twenty fifth, an observance of uh Christmas, uh, the building is also closed, January first is New Year's Day. Also closed and January sixth is the next, is the first meeting of two thousand twenty five. Woo hoo.
That'll be our swearing in.
That will also be your swearing in, yes. I will swear at you that day.
Compared to any other day?
Those are usually under my breath.
Usually.
That's after we adjourn.
All the way home. Uh, the chamber meeting. Or council member reports, um, yeah, just to confirm, there's no work session in December.
That is correct, yeah.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Next time I even be on the sixth.
That is correct, right, and Max said I have the chamber meeting date wrong?
Right, fifteenth or Wednesday is uh.
Okay, so December eighteenth is the next chamber meeting, my apologies.
Um, blow in the snow ended up being canceled. Due to cold, will postpone, excuse me, happened last week, this weekend. I saw. All the counselors except the Grinch over here.
Ron.
This is publicized.
Was he still wearing that same Halloween costume?
Yeah.
It was Facebook.
Yeah. Face, face, no, I don't have that. Yeah. I looked at the Black Jack America. Large coffee, and so.
He was down there.
At, at any rate, it was the, it was well attended. Regardless, there was a lot of thank yous, a lot of heart looks good, um, people were happy, so. We'll call it a success. Uh, with that, anybody got anything else?
No. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? I, we stand adjourned.
Careful walking up your vehicles. I ended up. Almost under my truck when I got out.
Uh, I was just telling Max, my hip replacement that I had last December is my left leg and I stepped out of my vehicle and almost did the splits, which is not good for me. Yeah, it's summer eighteenth, I had it last year. And it's my one year follow up next, what, Thursday? Yeah.
Oh, I talked to him.
I was looking at it, I haven't been there.